City of Rockaway Beach City Council meeting on Wednesday, February 14th, 2024 at 6:00 PM will come to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, my nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a problem. Let's record who is in attendance. Council President Chief.
Present.
Council Franken.
Here.
Council Hayes.
Present.
Council Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis?
Present.
Mayor McNeely is present. The consent agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group whereby all are passed with a single motion and vote. To have before you the consent agenda on the approval of the January 10th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, approval of January 10th, 2024 workshop minutes, and review of January 2024 check register. The minutes of the previous meetings and the January 2024 check register were distributed beforehand. Does the counselor wish to remove any of these items from the consent agenda to be discussed individually during items removed from consent agenda? All right.
I'd like to add a line to the minutes of the council meeting.
Then we'll, which, the?
Regular meeting.
Give me a second here. Okay, item is removed and we will discuss that during the items removed from consent agenda. Are there any other items to be removed? All right, if there are no other items for removal, are there any clarifying questions pertaining to the documents in the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the two remaining items in the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the two remaining items in the consent agenda.
A second.
I'll second it.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the two remaining items in the consent agenda. We record how counselors vote. Council President Chief.
Yes.
Counsel Franken.
Yes.
Counsel Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Martin is absent. Counsel McGinnis?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda, the two items in the consent agenda pass unanimously with one absence. All right, we recognize and welcome Michael Noonser. Is he coming from us virtually?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. I think I heard, I think I heard him.
Yes, I'm on. I can't turn my video on, but I'm on audio anyway.
You should be able to.
Mr. Noonser is from the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency, also known as STIA, to discuss the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant program. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, thank you. So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to, to explain a little bit about what's going on with this whole series of grants. And I will start off by saying that I am not an expert on any one portion of this, but I'm spending quite a bit of time trying to figure out how it is supposed to work, and I will pass that along to you. I want to just take a few minutes to sort of make a quick presentation, and then I'll be happy to entertain questions. There are really three grants or three studies in process, kind of mixed together here. The first one is the work that City of Rockaway did with the conceptual design memo that was done by Destination Management Advisors last summer. And that is work that was primarily to, to figure out what the population of, of Rockaway had in mind. There is the CPP grant, which is the Community Paths Project Grant, that is an ODOT grant. And then there is the new one that is being applied for right now, which is the RAISE grant, which is part of the Biden Administration's infrastructure rebuilding effort. And so I want to explain those grants a little bit, but I first want to go back over some of the agencies and make sure that everybody understands who is playing what role before I try to explain how it's going to fit together. So, City of Rockaway is, all of the, all of the grants are basically covering the Salmonberry Trail within the City of Rockaway, and perhaps a little bit on each side. That isn't necessarily defined at this point. STF helped City of Rockaway, that is Salmonberry Trail Foundation, help the City of Rockaway get the, the Community Paths Grant in 2022. And I'll go into the history of that in a minute. The RAISE grant that we're helping Tillamook County get is, is a much bigger grant. It's somewhere between $22 and $25 million. And it's through a completely different program than the Community Paths Grant. And so those two are related only sort of superficially. ODOT is involved here because they are the ones that are managing the CPP grant. It's an ODOT program. It's got federal money. ODOT has to manage that project. I may have misspoken to a couple of folks earlier this week. The RAISE grant is not necessarily managed by ODOT. It would be, it will be the responsibility of Tillamook County to manage that through probably some hired resources. Oregon Coast Scenic Railway has the lease to operate a railroad on the Port of Tillamook Bay Railroad right-of-way. And they have what we would call is the primary lease. They, they're operating a railway and they're operating it under Federal Railway Administration rules. Whole different set of rules than the rest of us operate under. STIA and Salmonberry Trail Foundation, STIA is the intergovernmental agency that has the rail-banked rights to build a trail along the Salmonberry Corridor that extends all the way over into Washington County. And the STIA is made up primarily of the parks, Oregon Parks, Oregon Forest, and the two counties, Tillamook and Washington County. They, STIA cannot in of themselves do any money raising or work to get money, so they created the Salmonberry Trail Foundation as sort of their operating arm. And I actually am part of the Salmonberry Trail Foundation. I'm on their Board of Directors and I'm chairman of their Planning and Construction Committee. Port of Tillamook Bay actually owns the railroad, the ground under the, under the railroad. And then there are an incredibly long alphabet soup of regulatory agencies that will be somehow involved with this project. Federal agencies such as U.S. Corps of Engineers, FEMA, EPA, all sorts of like that. State of Oregon, a number of agencies will be involved with this. And Tillamook County will be involved with this from a land use planning and other standpoints. So this project has a little bit of activity for everybody. Any questions about that aspect of it, what the, who the players are? I didn't make an exhaustive list because it gets exhaustive. No? All right, well, let's go to the, the next sort of phase of this, which is looking at the different planning efforts. So the, the conceptual design memo that City of Rockaway Beach came up with was originally intended to expedite the CPP grant so that they, you could apply for a construction money on the next funding cycle for the Community Paths Grant. That, at this point, is essentially impossible. There's no way that, that, that engineering will be able to be done. So the work that was done by Destination Management Advisors is simply going to be rolled forward into the engineering work under the CPP grant and will, I assume, and I hope, will inform the discussion about different options that are possible and how those might play out. It's important to note that that effort, the conceptual design memo, did not include some of the fairly heavy players such as Oregon Coast Scenic Railway, STIA, ODOT, or the port. And so some of the options that were listed there don't necessarily reflect those entities priorities, let's put it that way. But it's, it's not wasted effort by any means because this is forming, as I say, a baseline by which other options can be evaluated as time moves on. Then I want to talk about the CPP grant because that was Salmonberry Trail Foundation helped City of Rockaway Beach get that grant in 2022. It was originally a construction grant to actually build trail, do engineering and build trail. It quickly became clear that that was, there wasn't enough money in that grant to do much of anything, so it was converted to a refinement grant, basically an attempt to get to 30% engineering. That conversion process turned out to be very difficult and very time-consuming, and it hasn't actually completed yet. And ODOT, as I understand it, is in negotiation with consultant to do the work, but that hasn't been finalized yet. And, and I don't, I haven't really been part of that. I know the City of Rockaway hasn't been part of it. It's all been a little bit frustrating because we're, we're not involved with ODOT's procedure for, for purchasing that, that consultant, but we just have to wait for it to spool itself out. A big part of this study will be to look at the various alignments for the trail that are, that are possible through the City of Rockaway Beach. The original document that you had done for the planning document is, had some options. Again, I don't know that it reflects all of the priorities of all of the players, but that's one of the big items that will have to be addressed is where is the trail actually going to be put? And the Salmonberry, or the rail right-of-way is primarily where it is, but that doesn't control exactly which side of the tracks and other things that'll have to be evaluated. Now, the RAISE grant is, can be a very large sum of money. The, the value that we're going to, for reasons that are way beyond the scope of this, is about 20 to 25 million, which is approximately the estimated cost for the chunk of trail from Beach Street on the north end all the way down to Washington Street on the south end, as determined by the original parametrics planning documents, the coast segment document, scaled up to today's dollars. So that's, that's an indication of why the original CPP grant just wasn't big enough is because it was off by almost a factor of 10 on the costs for construction. STF is doing most of the work to write this grant and get the proposal ready. Salmonberry Trail Foundation has hired ALTA Engineering to do the cost benefit analysis. And we are putting in about two or three months' worth of labor to, to get this thing written. It's a big effort for us. We'll see, it'll go. We'll see where it goes. The RAISE grant is actually a better source of funding, we feel, for making the trail because it is a larger dollar figure and can be used for a longer expansion of trail. The CPP grants are limited to approximately $5 million, so there would need to be four or five funding cycles to pay for the, the whole $25 million trail, and that stretches out into 10 to 12 years minimum. And so if we can get the CPP grant, that pushes the things into maybe six or seven years, depending on what the permitting looks like. One of the key things that the RAISE grant approval process focuses on is whether or not a project is ready. And it's a very strong aid in our attempt to get this money, that the, the design document that you guys had put together for the conceptual design memo is an indication of readiness. The CPP grant is an indication of readiness. Everybody in Rockaway is, is doing everything they can to make this ready. And from what we understand, that is a very strong help in getting this money. Again, the grant management, when, when that money comes in, if it does, it will be a responsibility of Tillamook County to not necessarily do the work. That's, that's a very technical and complex process, but it will be the responsibility of Tillamook County to, to, to use the, the funds to pay for somebody to do that work. So, that's a very quick overview. Hopefully you didn't drown in all of the abbreviations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Any, any questions?
I think he was pretty thorough. And so I guess my question is, and first of all, I want to thank city staff for this because I know our city manager and probably the recorder and city planner and other people have just been doggedly after this, and I want to thank them for that. I think I lost them. Oh, there is. But are, is there anything next that City Council can do? Or is this something we leave to the city staff to do the next steps?
Well, my understanding is that there's a letter of agreement or a support that needs to come from City of Rockaway Beach. I don't know what all it takes to get that. But that does, that is key to that grant proposal. Obviously, if you folks don't support it and it's going to be in your town, it's probably not going to go far.
It's on our agenda tonight.
Good.
Yeah, we have, Michael, we're, it's on the agenda. It's good and taken care of tonight.
Good.
So I have a question. The last meeting that I was in with you, the RAISE grant, the one for 22 to 25 million, which one is that? Tell me.
That's the RAISE grant.
Okay. When I listened to you speak, I didn't understand that that might be allocated to our portion of the trail. But that's what I'm hearing you say now. Is that correct?
Well, at the time of that meeting, the exact segment of the trail hadn't really been determined. So the, the RAISE grant is for, covers all of the trail within Tillamook County. But as a part of the writing of the grant, that was narrowed down to the segment of the trail that best matched the funding, had the best chance of getting approved or whatever. And so it's only fairly recently that this section of trail has sort of landed as the primary choice.
And so as doing this, does that help move ODOT forward and where they're at in their process?
No, that's not, ODOT is not, is not, is not involved with the RAISE grant. The intention or the hope is that the output from the CPP grant will be used for the RAISE grant, but they're not, they're not really linked in, in any formal way at the moment.
Yeah. That's for me. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much for joining us and providing that overview.
Well, you're, you're very welcome. And if you've got other questions, you can probably funnel them through Luke and get to me eventually, and we'll try and get them answered.
Yeah, that's right.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Good night.
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 All right, at this point, I'm going to be sharing some information on law enforcement statistics provided to the city by Under Sheriff Matt Kelly of the Tillamook County Sheriff's Office. All right, thank you. If you'll hold it there for a second. I just want to begin by thanking Under Sheriff Matt Kelly for providing the annualized incident-type statistics upon which my presentation is built. And, and thank Under Sheriff Kelly for joining us this evening to answer any questions from the counselors after my, my brief presentation. First, I want to say that we are very well-served by deputies Alders and Grogan, and really appreciate the, the work and the, the service to our community. But I am excited to announce that tentatively, sometime in the middle of this year, we could have our third patrol deputy in place there in Academy at this point. They need to complete that successfully, and there may be some additional steps they go through. But to have our third deputy, potential deputy in Academy is a really exciting thing. And then during the most recent recruiting effort by the Tillamook County Sheriff's Office, Under Sheriff Kelly identified an individual who is a candidate to be our fourth patrol deputy. But this individual is very, very early in the process. But again, it's exciting to, to hear that. Next slide, please. So in, in 2023, well, let me back up. Anybody who's attended this meeting knows that Deputy Grogan gives us a report. Part of that report is a list of all the incident types that happened in the previous month. And so I, I reached out through City Manager Shepherd to Under Sheriff Kelly to see if he could collapse it and give us a, you know, an annual view of those stats. So that's what we're really talking about. We had 1,934 incidences in 2023 across 80 different types. And 19 of those types accounted for 80% of the, the activity. And, and you can see up on the, on the slide, the top five incident types that took place. If you go down to the, the bottom of that 19, you find things like vehicle with 33 incidences, ordinance violation with 30, child endangerment with 29, disturbance with 28. And then at the bottom, that 19th is theft at 25. So give you a sense of the kind of criminal activity that's taking place in our community that our sheriff's department is responding to. Next slide, please. All right, I took a comparison. I did have four or five years of data. In the middle of that was the pandemic, so I just compared 2022 to 2023. And we did see an 18% increase in incidents, or I should say, an 18% increase in incidents from 2022 to 2023, and you can see the actual numbers there. So activity has gone up. And the top five increasing over 2022 was incoming 9/11 calls, taking a follow-up action, assisting in a situation, traffic stops, and civil activities. So that's, that's the, the things that have increased from 2022 to 2023. Interestingly, we saw a very large increase in noise complaints over 2022, a 325% increase. Next slide. The top five decreasing over 2022. So we, we saw a drop in the sheriffs dealing with civil service, suspicious behavior. There was a drop in business checks, a drop in ordinance violations, and a drop in a response to alarms. Next slide, please. Again, thank you, Under Sheriff Kelly, for the stats. Does the council have any questions?
What's you, you, MV?
I'm not probably using the whole region.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to staff reports. The chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse for the report for the fire department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager of Rockaway Beach. You'll find in front of you the council report for, from the fire department for January of 2024. Jump right into our calls for service. 911 calls, only 19 last month. It's the second lowest total since I've been here in four years, which I found very interesting. Don't worry, February is making up for it. About 14 of those calls still heavily on the medical side. We did have one fire alarm, two structured fires. One was a very minor fire, the other was kind of a major fire. We had 12 trainings last month. We started EMT class, so we're full board training Wednesday nights, Thursday nights, and Saturdays. Seven of our staff right now, volunteers and paid, are involved in the class, which keeps them very, very busy. We also had some non-emergency stuff. We were on the beach twice last month on a couple of the nicer days with free public assist and even room playing. Below that, you'll see the year-to-date data. And it's kind of nice, you know, look at that now over a four-year period of kind of tech trends or and, and obviously you can see that that was the lowest 911 call month we've ever had, or January had in the last four years. Training's been, we've been working hard trying to keep our skill levels up and improve that group. Even if our numbers are down a little bit from last year, we're actually down about three members. But I feel that we have some very efficient, we got staff that's working together. All, all of us are getting along good. But we, last month, we took some rainy weather classes. We did some communication stuff. I had a lot of younger folks. We taught them incident command, hazardous materials, EMT training. We did some bleeding control. So there was some good training, good practical training last month. The beach data is pretty simple. We were out there twice. And if you see the red and zeros, which is a good sign, means we didn't have to talk to anybody or ask, you know, or, you know, educate any of our public. The group I'm most excited about is the emergency management portion of where we're getting with the city. And I see a good smile there. I like to see that. So we have three groups, three separate groups. We'll start with the CERT group. They're meeting now. They did an online portion and completed it. And then three weeks ago, they started their practical exercises so they can get certified. They've had three weeks of it now. I'm getting certified. There's, let's see, two more Tuesday nights, is that correct? And then a Saturday final exam. I forgot to write down the date of the final exam, but after that, we'll have some functional exercises we'll practice. But you'll have an operational CERT team in town, which is a big step in getting this down. The preparedness group, they've been working hard. You'll see their notes on our city website. They are really honing in on their preparedness for a natural disaster, for example, power outage, storm problems, warming center in half of this building if needed. And it's working really well. They've acquired most of their supplies to make sure you have a hot meal, a bowl of soup, a cup of coffee, and a safe, warm place to, to hang out until the power comes back on or whatever, your house isn't flooded anymore. And then the radio group, they're one that has kind of been on their own for the last couple of years. But that is where our next focus is going to be, is to get that level up. They've got a lot of interest in joining the radio group. We're going to get ready to put another radio class together so we have more and more trained people and tighten their protocols and operations a bit. But locally, we're doing great at the regional level, Tillamook County. We're working with the county manager and that TC4 committee, which is really seeing an uprise county-wide in preparedness. It's a great thing to see, working with everybody. And I think every, every time we meet, we're getting better at what we do. So I would say thank you to all the volunteers. There'll be a bunch in this room. And I appreciate everybody's efforts. It takes, takes a lot of people to make this happen, so we're moving forward. My winter projects, continue elevating that emergency management piece and preparedness piece of our city. I have complete revising the fire department policy manual. I'll announce it's in draft form. And City Manager Shepherd will be getting that next week to start the review, which I'm sure he's very excited about. I would be. We're still working on gathering the data for our ISO improvements, looking at grant options all the time. The county level and us are also are looking at the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That's kind of a big kind of a big topic. Countywide, right now, we're still moving forward with that. EMT class, still looking for recruits, if anyone's young enough and gotten got open spots. And a little bit of pre-fire planning. That's one thing firefighter boos has been tasked with this winter. I I touched on it last council meeting, that it may become your business to voluntarily look at your business to pre-fire plan, get ready to, in case there's an emergency, your place of business. Other than that, spring break and summer are just around the corners. We're prepping for that. Legislature's in session, short session. They're looking to fund our the staffing grants for the state fire marshal's office. It looks like it has promising support. So it looks like we'll have that program again this summer. And then I was planning on having the status for our ladder truck, and today got away on me. So I will get that information. We'll try to get it out, maybe in your Friday update, what the status is of that. Under that, is there any questions?
I have a two things. For the people who are here or on Zoom, would you explain real quickly what CERT is and and how that will benefit people who live here, work here, tourists? That's my first one. And my second one is, if you mentioned that you're down three volunteer sites, and if anyone here or on Zoom would want to volunteer, how do they do that?
Those are great questions. The Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, is is a team that is trained in basic search and rescue, basic per day. They're trained to fight small fires, treat out situations, search and rescue. It's basically a team that during a natural or man-made disaster can be activated, come and help in the community that is at a trained level that's manageable. And I know in an emergency, everybody wants to help. Everybody always does. But this is specifically trained for the emergency itself. And there's, I think there's 18 that are consistently making the class. So at the end of this class, we'll have 18 trained volunteers to help in the event of emergency. We'll be opening this up again, maybe once a year. I don't know when we'll open it up. But as there's more interest, we'll form another class of practical exercises in front of you. To volunteer at the fire department. Easy. Come see me. Sit down. I'll hand you an application, application there at the station. We'd like to talk to you a little bit ahead of time, so you know what we're getting into. Yeah, exactly. I like to allow them, because it's true. You don't know what you're really volunteering for. There's a lot to it. We have a, we did lose three, like Chief Vincent, after 35 years, he's tired. We lost a couple others that moved out in the area that were key members. But we've recruited one good recruit so far in this next round. And anybody who's interested, please come down.
Thank you.
Hey, Bale, any questions?
I've heard a lot about the TC4. What's that stand for?
Well, if I knew Tillamook County's four, it's a four regional thing. It's each preparedness group, the Haylen Bay, it's a civic city group, South County group, Tillamook. Nobody actually has a formal-
So it's fire for sheriff's department, P U D?
Mostly just the preparedness groups themselves, like the Haylen Bay, E V, C M B. You did that right. Our group, Bay City's got a group, South County has a group. Believe it or not, the only area, the reason it doesn't have a group is Tillamook. They don't have anything with preparedness. The rest of us do. So yeah, the group that gets together once a month on a Thursday to discuss the status of their own group and how to move the mission forward.
Right, thank you.
You bet. Bale? Thank you, Chief Hesse. You're very welcome. The chair recognizes Deputy Grogan to report for the Tillamook County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, Mayor, you're ready to have my presentation before me, so it's easy to do. First things first, I was Rockaway Deputy, one of the pages, this is Rockaway, although what the county has allowed us to free up and help out the county with the stuff they did need help with. That being said, what a difference a month makes. We all know the December report was a rather lengthy one. January came back to our normal winter days in Rockaway Beach. But we do have a few notable calls to report. We did have a domestic disturbance that resulted in an injury. An arrest was made, case was reported in the district attorney's office. We responded to burglary at a local business, thousands of dollars had been taken. No contact with the client. There was also a vehicle break-in reported at the Old Grove Cedar Tower, Cedar Tree parking lot, when it was broken, items were stolen. Again, we've covered this quite a few times. Eight persons with you, not many trauma. Don't make it miserable. Makes a criminal job way too easy if they see inside in front of the window. Lastly, we were assisted by the sheriff's office detectives in executing a search warrant of residents here in Rockaway. I just want to take the time to point out how long and how hard our detectives worked to get a search warrant executed, authorized, and so it takes a lot of work, a lot of hours, time and determination to get that all executed and planning. So I just want to give a special shout out to the driving taxes. They're not seen by the community too much, but we really do appreciate it for all the hard work that they do. So for any question?
Questions?
Happened more than once over the last couple of years. Would it be something that the sheriff's department could use if the city would put a surveillance camera in the parking lot?
Very much. It would also deter a lot of people. It's like I say almost every meeting, if we have cameras, photos, pictures, our Rockaway group, the Facebook posts, sheriff's office Facebook posts, we get pictures out there. People really, really want to help us in finding the suspects. So it helps a lot.
We will talk with our city manager.
Works for me.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Public Works Superintendent Dan Amerson. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Andrew.
We'll start here with the water operations. So our operators conducted preventive maintenance checks through our fresh filtration system and found them to be in great condition. For water not used, it's electrically controlled silooids to press air for valve operation. This requires extensive knowledge to understand when and where there is a problem. Imagine the complexity of approximately 60 air-controlled valves offering above 100 PSI, additional 40 manually controlled valves, all ranging in size from 3/4 inch to 10 inch. Two of the valves displayed points of failure this month. We will be changing out one 8-inch and one 3-inch. Next is our sewer operations. Last month posed challenges for our sewer plant, including a loss of a level control, record high flows, power outage, and freezing conditions. I'm pleased to report that the newly installed level control is operating as designed. During routine rounds, our crew identified signs of failure in the pump at the 12th Street lift station. Action was taken, parts were ordered, and the pump was successfully rebuilt, now functioning as if it was new. Additional observations noted issues with runtimes on the pump at White Dove Sewer Lift Station. This is our city's largest pump station. To ensure efficiency, it was removed from service, sent for repairs, and has since been reinstalled and operating as designed. Responding to a sewer plug on late January 22, our team encountered a persistent obstruction and called air baldies for use of their high-pressured water hose. Rockaway Beach Water Freedom Plan has proven time and time again its durability. Moving on, roads, Public Works did some asphalt, pothole patching in Cedar Creek and the Haylen Mountains. Also added gravel to roads in need. New stop signs at South 6 and Easy, Haylen Island, and North 3rd and Palisades. Combined with brush clearing, involved improves both traffic control and visibility. Forecast showed heavy rain on January 27. So Public Works preemptively dug out dishes on Coral Street. And we can't forget about the ice storm, which had its own challenges. Thankfully, no issues to cover there. Moving on to parks, the no access signs have been installed at the public beach access points. A couple have recently been stolen or removed. To prevent further flooding, we called advanced excavators to dig out the ocean out home by the high school. And while they were out there, logs were added to the track rack at the wayside. It's been destroyed during the last king tides. And lastly, the park, the Anken Street Park project is going very smooth and is ahead of schedule. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
The line, so in his report, he talks about wastewater treatment system. Says legend has it that it weren't shorted off a hurricane mistaking it for a gentle breeze.
Thank you, see if we read it.
Florence here is City Manager Shepard.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to do what I usually do, and I will talk about what's on the agenda. Hi, well, I'm counting a hearing or a considering. We have a couple of public hearings. Our first one is a second public hearing on proposed ordinance 2024-01, which amends our code of ordinances related to short-term rentals. And it does three things. It establishes the authority of the city council to set a cap on the number of licenses, STR licenses in Rockaway Beach. As a side note, it doesn't set what that cap is. That'll be done later through a different process in March. And I'll talk more about that later. This ordinance also authorizes the establishment of a new license waiting list and establishment of an under-construction waiting list. We have a second public hearing on a second ordinance, 2024-02. And this ordinance prescribes the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or city council position. Our charter is pretty clear that that we need to have an ordinance to do that. And state law gives us two options. It allows candidates, potential candidates to run for office either through paying a filing fee or through obtaining voter signatures. And what that means is is to become a candidate for office, you have to take an action. And the state gives us two options, pay a fee or collect voter signatures. And the city's past practice has been to require voter signatures. And so this ordinance codifies what we have had in place within the last 10 or 15 years, as far as I'm aware, and really doesn't affect any other part of our elections process. In investigating some other parts of our election process, we discovered that the charter mandates that we have an ordinance that we didn't have. So that's what this does. It fills a gap. But it doesn't affect anything else. It's just what action is required to run for office, paying a fee or collecting signatures. Those are the two options. And this one codifies collecting signatures. I think it's 11 signatures, 11 voter signatures someone will have to collect to run for office here in Rockaway if this ordinance is adopted. After the public hearings, the council will have an opportunity to consider two council proposed amendments to the first ordinance we talked about, to the STR ordinance. And so one of the proposed amendments would amend Section C, and would allow short-term license transfers at the change of ownership. The other amendment they will consider is an amendment to add a whole new subsection, which would provide a new exemption for those that are in the process of buying a home here in Rockaway Beach. And so a little more detail on the the first amendment that they'll consider, and that is the allow short-term license transfers at the change of ownership. It basically removes, this amendment removes the language about non-transferability of STR licenses. But it also requires new owners to notify the city within 30 days of a change of ownership. So notifying the city that you are the new owner in that basically affects that transfer if this proposed amendment is adopted here. A second amendment, like I said, adds a new subsection for those in the process of buying a new home, gives them the exemption to obtain a a STR license. And there's a few stipulations. So the new owner must be under contract by the effective date of the ordinance. And so if the ordinance is, if this amendment passes and it's included in the ordinance, and the ordinance is adopted tonight, then the effective date of the ordinance would be March 15. So to get the exemption as a new owner, well, under the cap, you've got to be under contract by March 15. Additionally, the new owner has 180 days to actually take ownership of the property. And so that gives you till 180 days is September 11. So by September 11, the new owner would have to take take ownership of the property. And then they have 270 days from that point to apply for a license to the city. So that would put it at December 10 as a deadline for somebody to apply for a a license with the city. So just one more time, so they can consider two amendments tonight. We talked about what they would do. And the city council has the 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 authority to amend the ordinance with one of these proposals, or both of the proposals, or none of them. It's up to the council tonight. But those are, those will be considered as amendments to the STR ordinance later tonight. And there's a lot going on. So I just want to go over the process a little bit on this STR ordinance, 2024-01. As far as a tentative schedule goes, so everything in green will happen tonight, could happen tonight. We'll have our second public hearing. The council will consider the amendments to the ordinance. We'll have a second reading and approval of the ordinance, and then adoption of the ordinance. That's all possible tonight. If those happen, the effective date of the ordinance will be March 15. In between tonight and March 15, we'll have our council meeting on the 13. And that is where the council will adopt the resolution to set what that actual cap number is. And the reason we do that is, is the council has a desire, if the cap is set, to revisit that 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 cap number periodically. And so it's much easier to do that if we set it through a resolution. It's it's an easier process to to make modifications to that number. All right. So once that ordinance is done, we'll do a first reading. Or this 2024, I show it too. I think we we talked about that. What action does one need to take to run for office here in Rockaway Beach? And just real quickly, that ordinance could be adopted tonight through a very similar process. Public hearing, first reading and approval, second reading and approval and adoption. And if that is adopted tonight, effective date will also be March 15. You know what's wrong? Done with the two ordinances, we brought to our resolutions. These are a lot, lot funner. So Resolution 2024-10 approves various wayside use applications. I think there are four from the Chamber of Commerce and a handful from the Lions Club, different dates. They'd like to have their their weenie wagon out there. And then we'll have Resolution 2024-12. And this approves money awards for the facade improvement grant program. And this program provides funding to businesses to repair or improve their exteriors. And the city received this round a little over $100,000 in eligible grant requests from seven businesses in Rockaway Beach. This program is funded by our TRT funds and administered by Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. We have Resolution 2024-13, which authorizes the city to apply for a state parks grant for the Lake Lidle project. We're asking for about $445,000. And this is to install ADA accessible restrooms at the Lake Lidle boat launch property that we now have operational control of and utilities. So no more vault toilets. We're looking for lights and water and flushable toilets and all of that, including two ADA parking spots. So we're applying to the the state Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for a grant to do that. And the city planner and I will head up to Salem on April 2 and present the project to their grant review board. And then we all sat through the presentation by by Michael from STEA, talking about the the RACE grad. So I won't go into a whole lot of detail there. But there's a significant amount of funding that that is available. And if they get it, it'll lead to construction of the Savory Trail section through through Rockaway Beach. And then we have a, we have one marketing grant award to make tonight. The Rockaway Beach Community Education applied and asked for $2,932 to produce and distribute brochures and make some social media videos. And then lastly, I believe, is Resolution 202- And then lastly, I believe, is, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen, uh, which, uh, approves a proposal from, uh, uh, SSW Consulting to help us put together a five-year strategic plan here for the city of Rockaway Beach. Uh, we're looking at a times, timeline of March to October if we get that, uh, proposal approved tonight. And that would be a big step forward for Rockaway to, uh, take some steps to, uh, uh, start planning out, uh, on, on a five-year timeline. Um, pretty neat position to be in. Very exciting. Then I'll, I'll just finish up here. Uh, as everybody's probably seen, the wayside restrooms are, are no longer. And, uh, 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 Knife River is working as hard as it can to get, uh, get the new restrooms, uh, put in place. They're also working at the Anchor Street Lot, uh, to, uh, install another restroom, parking lot and, and, and playground. And they're all combined into one project as far as, uh, we're concerned administratively. Like Dan said, they're ahead of schedule and, uh, yeah, going very smoothly. So, but anyway, that's the biggest project we have in Rockaway Beach right now. And, uh, we're all excited. We'll all be excited to see that complete. That's all I have for you all tonight.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Shepard. The Rock, the Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to hold a public hearing to receive public comment on proposed ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero one and ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinance, Chapter one thirteen, related to short-term rentals in accordance with the City Charter, Chapter four, Section fifteen. At this time, I open the public hearings. Purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on proposed ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero one and ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinance, Chapter one thirteen, related to short-term rentals. Person speaking shall address their comments to the city council as a whole and keep their comments to three minutes. The electronic timer next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. Um, I do have the sign-up sheet here. I have two individuals already on here that, uh, are zooming in. Um, city reporter, do we have any other?
I see no other hands ready for the sentence.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, then, um, the chair will recognize, um, Cynthia Farin, who's, uh, coming to us, uh, via Zoom. Uh, please state your full name and address and, um, keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, this is Cynthia Farin. I'm at two ninety North Pacific there in Rockaway Beach. Um, so I spoke at the last meeting as well. It's become very clear to me. I, I'm not in favor of the current, current ordinance. Uh, I am looking more favorably at the two, um, addendums, I think they're called, um, that have been suggested. I think that's taking a step to make it less uh, abusive to us short-term rental owners. Um, the thing I, or encourage the council to.
You're breaking up. I'm not sure.
Those of us who have bought our mortgages in recent terms, those STRs are definitely based upon the ability to have an STR. So we run the risk of being upside down on our mortgages, not being able to sell for the amount of the mortgage. Um, we currently have existing regulations that were put into place within the past two years. Uh, I question what, uh, the city of Rockaway Beach is doing to enforce those regulations before they put more on us. I understand that it is hard on people who have short-term rentals in their neighborhoods if those are not well managed. And that's the purpose of those other, um, ordinances. If they're enforced, it can make life a lot easier for everybody, but I'm not certain that there is current enforcement. As a short-term renter, I have far more maintenance expenses than any long-term renter or owner. That means I am supporting a lot of small businesses. Since I bought my property in two thousand seventeen, I have seen a large increase relatively for the area of small business owners who are handymen, gardeners, um, electricians, carpet cleaners, you name it. All of those are the businesses I'm hiring. The, the, those businesses didn't start their business thinking that they would only have the current population to support. They started those businesses expecting to be able to see growth. As do your restaurants, your gift shops, et cetera. So limiting STRs to, um, I mean, the caps I heard today that people are entertaining really are existing, doesn't help those businesses out. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Trela Reyes, who's also coming to us, uh, via Zoom. Please state your name and your address and again, uh, uh, limit your five minutes to three minutes.
Okay. I believe you can hear me now. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Trela Reyes. I'm at one eleven Northwest Twenty-first Avenue. I have been a full-time resident since two thousand twenty. I do not currently have a short-term rental and provide long-term housing to people serving this community. I strongly oppose ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero one. Many well-researched affidavits have been provided by a multitude of property and business owners that this is not in the best interest of this town, and I concur. My home here in Rockaway is not only my full-time residence, but is my majority investment, as most Americans' homes are. I rely on the value and ability to use this investment as life dictates. I am extremely familiar with the curveballs life can throw at any of us at any moment. This ordinance prevents the invested homeowner flexibility to use their personal property as needed, planned, or in so many instances, completely unplanned. I sold my previous home, one that I designed myself and raised my children in because a stage-three cancer diagnosis changed my perspective. Purchasing a home in a desirable tourist town provides me and my family more financial stability. This ordinance takes away that stability. It removes the future option of using my home as a short-term rental if my health requires me to live elsewhere for any period of time, or use it as income source if I am unable to work. This is my reality. My story is only one, but it resonates with many in this town who rely on their investments in property and the ability to have the flexibility to use their property as needed when life events occur. Whether it is a major illness, the death of a spouse, or the need to be a way to care for an elderly parent or family member. I could continue to list more examples, but I believe you are getting my point. Those who have petitioned this council to place this ordinance up for consideration, and many who have voiced, voiced their support of it, have noted their reasons as traffic disturbances, late-night noise, too many cars parked on their streets, and a variety of issues they deem to be nuisances. What this city needs to do is have enforcement of the ordinance already in place to address those violations. I have at least two STRs on my dead-end street, and I enjoy encountering the visitors that use them and find them less disruptive than some of the other property owners. But regardless of how any of us perceive and experience the visitors to our town, the inconvenience of some should never be considered over the life-altering financial security of others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Houston Mayor, we have an additional guest on Zoom, Dia Carano.
Um, I'm sorry.
Dia is the first name.
Yeah.
Last name is K.A.R.A.N.O.H.
Uh, Dia Carano, uh, please state your name and, uh, your address, uh, and, uh, limit your, uh, your talk to three minutes, please.
Hello, uh, my name is Dia Carano. I'm from seven-two-seven North Pacific. Um, I also would like to say I'm against the ordinance that's, uh, being passed. However, if it should pass, I urge you to go with the amendments, especially the first amendment is very important. Uh, because, uh, should we not have that first amendment, I think the values of these houses are gonna go down drastically, which is unfair on the current owners who bought, uh, with the fact that you can have a short-term rental included in the value. Uh, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
All right. The chair recognizes, uh, Barbara Riley. Please approach the, uh, podium and state your name and address and, uh, you know the drill with the, the magic egg over there. Yellow means one minute, red means three minutes.
That yellow flashing goes on for how long?
Two minutes.
Oh, really?
Oh, no, it goes on for one minute. Once it turns yellow, there's one minute left.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council President and City Council. I know ordinance two oh two four dash one is a difficult issue for you, uh, not to show you my enthusiastic support. This ordinance offers a process to manage short-term rentals in Rockaway Beach. As of January tenth, two thousand twenty-four, we have four hundred and fifty-five active licenses or twenty-one point six houses, uh, twenty-one point six percent of houses in Rockaway Beach dedicated to short-term rentals with more in the pipeline. This is a higher percentage than the cities surrounding us. That statistic alone should be alarming enough to pass this ordinance. I feel we are late to the party, but not too late. Now's the time to draw a line in the sand and allow us some breathing room to establish a thoughtful process going forward. This ordinance will do that. Our neighbors to the north, the city of Manzanita, have had STR cap for years and maintain robust tourism in a hot real estate market. Fears of lawsuits, transfer rights, and property values should not persuade the council from those of us that want order and a thoughtful process applied to short-term rentals. With this ordinance, we will have the tools in process to continue to regulate the short-term rental situation beyond ordinance twenty-two dash four twenty-two passed in August tenth, two thousand twenty-two. That ordinance provided some tools to deal with the multiple annoying nuisances short-term rentals bring to our community. But despite that ordinance, we continue to see overloaded trashcans, illegal parking and speeding, animal and noise issues. Rockaway Beach will always be a tourist destination, as it should be, but it needs to be balanced with full-time residents who have moved here for the peace and beauty of our wonderful town. In the not-so-distant future, maybe we can further improve.
You still got a minute, sorry.
Uh, we can improve the situation by looking at specific caps in neighborhoods if needed. But for now, I ask you to pass this thoughtful consensus ordinance to give us the tools to regulate the short-term rental situation in Rockaway Beach. Thank you. Did I forget to give my address at the beginning?
Give it now. If you did, we'll have it.
Uh, three nine oh North Ocean Street, Rockaway Beach. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, the chair recognizes Justin McMahon. Please approach the, uh, podium, state your name and, uh, address. And of course, yellow means there's one minute left, red means you've used up your three minutes.
Thanks for having me again. Uh, last time, oh, sorry, Justin McMahon, three-six-six North McNair Street. Uh, just wanted to share a couple of thoughts on, number one, the number one issue for STR owners is the lack of compromise in this idea. I shared this with the mayor when we met, uh, that STR owners feel like they're, uh, being pushed into a corner and bearing the burden, uh, the desires of other people. Uh, while I recognize that there is needs, uh, there needs to be compromise for, for us to be on board. Uh, the ordinance, uh, the amendment to the ordinance would be a great idea that would help with that. Uh, as I met with the mayor and heard from some city council members I talked to, uh, there's one thing that we agree on with ordinance, and that's that this won't fix the housing problem. Uh, it is a very large problem, uh, but as I stated, if you look in the, uh, addendums to today's minutes, I wrote in there what, uh, why that is. Uh, 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 and I can't go through it all right now, but it won't do anything to fix the housing problem, not one thing. And this is a fact. This isn't my opinion. If you look at the math and what it costs to buy a house, you won't be able to buy the STRs that are out there. Um, it's just not gonna happen. Uh, and so since that's true, and since we, we, we look at this the same way a little bit, I wonder why that is even in the ordinance. Well, what's left at, if we were to take that out, what's left? Well, you're left with the well-being of people in the community and the visitors, and you're left with, um, uh, the strain on city services. Those are the two main ones after that. So let's look at those. Um, number one, the cap, it doesn't fix citizens being unhappy, unhealthy, or at risk with vacation rentals because the cap number really isn't going down all that much, a little bit. And over time, it certainly will go down, but it still won't, it won't change the fact that people are unhappy with those. I offered two solutions, uh, alone in my statement. Uh, one is a, a community action group that would take care of, uh, bringing problematic houses to, uh, the city and seeing how we can, uh, fix those. And then another one was more of a strict three-strikes rule. After that, you're left with the stretch city services. And from what I see, if money continues to go down from removing STRs over time, then the city won't have the money that it has right now that it gets from the TLT tax. After that, I, I'm left with the idea, so why is, why is that part in the ordinance, the part that talks about housing? Well, it's a really unpopular thing right now. It's a really important buzzword that everybody wants to solve. And so it makes this ordinance seem better than it is, and it makes people react emotionally and say, yes, we have to pass this ordinance because it's gonna solve the problem. It's not gonna solve the problem. Look at the math. It won't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Stephanie Winchester. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and pay attention to the yellow and red orb, please.
I'm Stephanie Winchester. My address is nine oh five North Third. I'm here today to speak in opposition of your amendments to the ordinance. This ordinance has many implications on current and future home values in our area. It removes property rights from your residents and homeowners, and it, uh, it makes it so that folks won't have options that they have today. Second homeowners, I am, be here as one who used to be a second homeowner, become residents of this area. And we hear time and time again of you, of folks who vacationed here and were able to live here full-time. Those second homeowners will lose some of their options when many of them have purchased homes that they may not be renting out currently, but may want to in the future. I, I question the idea of how we will set a cap, or you will set a cap, I should say. Um, it shouldn't be on what you think or what feels right. It should be based on facts or evidence. And the council's ability to adjust that cap almost on a whim doesn't give comfort to many of our residents. As has been said, if the object, if the objective here is low-cost housing, we all know that that is not what this will do. Um, if it's based on livability, we have some very good wording in our current ordinance that needs more enforcement and also could be added to to ensure that our management companies are really making sure that our renters are living by those rules. And we should continue to use those rules to make sure that our residents are, are following their rules. I have a short-term rental. That short-term rental has been used, um, by my husband and I. My husband is a contractor here to allow for long-term renters, um, who are the new, future residents that were in the houses that have been built. We are switching that back to a short-term rental, but it's nice to have that flexibility, and this goes, this goes against that. Also, you have some folks, including myself, that are in the process of submitting permits for another short-term rental, and we won't make it in time for the cap because we're waiting for end year. So now we've just lost some of our value in the land that we purchased and our flexibility for what will happen in the future. I urge you to not pass this.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Jason Maxfield. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. Watch the magic egg.
Sorry, I gave blood today. I'm a little shaky, uh, but, um, my name is Jason Maxfield. I live at two-one-one North Beacon Street. And uh, Mayor McNeely and members of the city council, thank you for your time. I'm here to give comments on the STR ordinance. It's a complex issue, and there are a lot of strong opinions, and I don't envy the decision you have to make, but I appreciate you taking this seriously. When I started following this issue months ago, I was unsure how I felt. Short term rentals aren't part of the fabric of Rockaway, and much of our economy depends on tourism. But after learning more, I believe that giving city council the power to regulate STRs is the right decision for these reasons. Almost ninety-four percent of STRs are owned by out-of-town investors, so nearly all of the revenue they generate leaves our community. The majority of jobs created by the STR industry are poverty-waisted jobs and are seasonal. Most importantly, Rockaway is the last town on the North Coast within the three-county region that does not have a cap on short term rentals. That means that we have a bullseye on Rockaway. Every investor in the region is looking at Rockaway. It's the only place they can buy. If we don't get a handle on this, there's a real danger that our town will be ceded out in the next few years, and that's already happened. Eighteen months ago, there was about three hundred and twenty rentals, short term rentals in Rockaway. Today, there's four hundred and sixty. That's an average of almost two houses per week that have been converted to short term rentals for the last eighteen months. And this situation wasn't a deliberate choice. Nobody planned on this. It wasn't the result of a tourism campaign or a strategic uh choice of a comprehensive plan. It happened to Rockaway because the choices made by communities around us. So getting a handle on the growth of uh STRs is the right choice. And the focus of Rockaway City City Council should be improving the life for the people of Rockaway. I'm not against tourism at all. It's an important part of Rockaway, but we need to balance the desires of tourists against the needs of our community. And right now, things seem to be getting out of balance quickly. Rockaway needs a holistic housing plan, as many people have mentioned, incentivizing new kinds of tourist accommodations like yurts or the airstream parks in Pacific City. And also, we need more long-term housing options, such as additional mobile home parks and development in areas that are less desirable for tourists. This will help Rockaway build a more diversified economy and a more stable year-round business climate. Most of the years, like now, most STRs are empty because there's just not demand from tourists. More rentals means more tourists only during the busiest times of the summer, when businesses are already overwhelmed. But full-time residents provide a customer-based U-rank. And finally, I want to speak to the proposed change for license transferability. I think that change is a mistake, and the original language should be preserved. Allowing license transferability will essentially mean giving owners of current STRs permanent licenses. They will never give them up, and that will create two classes of housing in Rockaway, inflating the value of current STRs and reducing the value of all other homes. That's a massive gift to current STR owners, ninety-four percent of whom live out of town. The people harmed by license transferability will be those of us who actually live in Rockaway and do not currently rent our homes because we'll probably never have the chance to do so. I'm gonna skip some of this for time, but I want to say that I think all homeowners should be treated equally. And the license, if the licenses are held by people that are using the short term rentals to retire here, they won't be concerned about transferability because they plan to end up in this community. They're not creating their houses as an asset to sell. I think, uh, I urge the city council to stand up for residents of Rockaway by voting no on transferability. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Penny Joff. You're written down here, but we can skip over you. Oh, somebody's playing games with me, Penny. We'll move on to the next name. Uh, the chair recognizes Catherine Lewis.
Hi, I'm Catherine Lewis. My office is at one one five North Third Street in the post office. Um, let's see here, I've just, this is gonna be short and sweet, and if there's any time, I'm gonna get into more details, but I um, I don't believe capital S T Rs will lead to affordability um in this area. Demand versus supply is just too great. Um, our proximity to the ocean and through COVID times led to a drastic increase in property values. Nobody with a median income can afford housing here. That's just the simple truth. Implementing a cap, I fear, will instead lead to a vacuum effect. I believe the vacuum will be filled by quote-unquote California buyers, cash buyers, out-of-state, people that don't need any income, and these houses, I believe, will remain empty and vacant the majority of the year. So that is my fear for local business owners and, you know, the people that want the restaurants to remain open, stores open, and have more tourists season. Um, implementing a cap will not lead to workforce housing. Again, our price in here is just too far out of, out of work, workforce housing. Now, what we need is more multifamily, probably in other areas like Toma, you know, City, Garrett, all these, the links from Carmody's. There's some other areas that we need to address that, and it's probably not Rockaway. It's just based on the landscape and affordability. Um, so the next biggest thing is, I guess, when you're looking at social media, is um the number of complaints about, like, I I was just curious how many complaints we get as a city. So I did a public records request. Um, I requested for the last few years, but I was only, I was only sent twenty twenty-three, and I don't know if it's just because we just started tracking those or what, but there were seven. One complaint was withdrawn, that leaves six. Five more about garbage, one was about helping. Carol's not putting on a spotlight here, but three of those were garbage complaints from you. So I'm curious, could we just put together a garbage task for something the STR fund pays for? And maybe put these, you know, charge the rental companies every time it has to be used. Um, it seems like that's a pretty small number of complaints for, say, for what seems like the stress of the issue. Um, I'm so glad to see transferability is um been added to ordinance because one of my biggest fears, and it's going to be the majority of my talk before that, was about liability for the city. I do feel that if we do not allow some kind of transferability to the current STR owners, you are going to see losses. Um, I think Lincoln City has sent two hundred and ninety-five thousand in litigation, and that, it doesn't matter how the outcome is, still two hundred and ninety-five thousand percent in litigation. So I am strongly encourage transferability. It will protect the people that bought into S T Rs here before there were any rules on the books. And I think that it should be something they are able to to use um in getting out of their their sales. I'm off, I've got a few more seconds. So one other thing is, in the, is part of the real estate sale, we are contingent a lot of the times on honoring future bookings, and without having something to help us with that, it will tie the way that we can sell houses. A lot of these contracts, the people have to spend, you know, the last one was seven thousand dollars to get out of a contract with the term, well, because the the people didn't want to do any STRs. And so the seller had to spend seven thousand to honor those future bookings. So I think that that is something to really consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Krista Hall.
I didn't realize I was signing up to speak either. Maybe I was following Penny. I I I think we need better directions out by the signup sheet.
Well, thank you for signing up, and you don't have to speak. It's not a requirement. Thank you. Um, well, then the chair will recognize Michael and Judy Strayer.
Hi, um, Michael Strayer, thirteen thirty. Best Cedar, no, it's North Cedar, correct? I live somewhere in Cedar. You know, like many residents, uh, we've seen our neighborhood uh become very short of long-term residents. Uh, we were writing, this is more or less a Valentine to Rockaway, but it's a general support uh for implementing a cap on short term rentals. As concerned property owners, we believe that such regulations are crucial to strike a balance between the economic benefits of short term rentals and the preservation of our community's character. A specific concern is the significant challenge gentrification poses for our community, especially those individuals vulnerable to displacement. The rapid proliferation of short term rentals has exacerbated this issue by altering the fabric of our neighborhoods. A well-defined cap on short term rentals will help protect our vulnerable senior population and our residents on fixed or limited incomes. As well, we believe a cap on short term rentals is essential for our community's well-being. Our neighborhoods thrive when residents have stable living conditions. Excessive short term rentals can disrupt the stability, affecting social bonds, safety, and the overall quality of life. The cap ensures that our community remains a place where people can put down roots and build lasting connections. By enacting a cap on short term rentals, we can foster a community that thrives economically while preserving its unique character. We thank you so much for your attention in this matter.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Deborah Reeves. You know the drill.
Do, um, I own Joe's Snacks and Beer. It's not dab in the middle of town. And um, just some of my concerns and why I started petitioning a little over a week ago was to find out how many people in town honestly um did not want a cap for many reasons. Um, we're in the process of building, as you know. Um, and my fear is, a year down the road, when I get my building finished, um, we're not gonna have any way of supporting the mortgage um because we wanted to offer it as short term rental to the medical field, uh hospitals and uh urgent care, uh people that come from out of town. Um, I know the amendment's held, uh, but still is not a guarantee if if you're somebody in this town that's a business owner um wanting to provide, um, you know, a better, better town, a better, um, you know, build a Rockaway up, um, support. I I'm a big supporter of local people here. Um, I have many that come in my store. Um, and I don't believe the cap is going to help. I I hear over and over again um from locals in that come in that they have no place to live. Um, they're supportables. Well, again, as everyone has said tonight, it's not going to fix um someone being able to afford, you know, a house. Um, even if I made hours long-term rentals, still the rent with with what the bank is telling me my mortgage is going to be, it wouldn't be anywhere near what someone making fifteen dollars an hour. I have employees that need homes. If I could provide them a home, I would, um, or a rental at at a rate that they would be able to afford. I'd be willing to look at also be able to support and and make those lower income um housing, um, you know, if it was, if there was enough incentive to do so. So I urge you to look at all of the avenues of what this cap is going to do because I don't believe it's going to help Rockaway grow, and us as business owners need the town to grow just for simple, simple reasons, you know, inflation and whatever. You know, so anyway, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Antoine Atala. Okay, all right. The chair recognizes Peter Bron. I'm sorry, come on up. Please state your name and address. And uh, this will go to green, and it'll go to yellow, and then back to red, and that'll be the end of your time.
My name is Peter Bronlowey, two zero eight South Fourth Street. Um, uh, my wife and I decided to invest in a beach house in twenty eighteen. Um, we're driving up and down the coast. We settled on Rockaway, had to do Rockaway. There wasn't much to invest in on a tight budget. We knew it had to be a fixer-upper. And we found a rusty old A-frame and had to have it. We got the keys and spent nine months working on it every weekend and follow our vacation. Now a well-maintained home set at the ice shore of the neighborhood. With our family getting bigger and a third one on the way, we've decided it's, you know, no longer bigger, big enough for us. So last year, we decided to invest more in Rockaway. We purchased a lot up at Lake Little and have invested tens of thousands of dollars and all of the surveys and designs and engineering to build this house. We're just now in the final, final engineering approval of structural design. But even if we applied for a permit today, there is no way we would be issued a permit by your arbitrary deadline of March twenty-ninth. According to the builder, my builder, the permit approval process here is at least two months out of performance. And that's assuming everything goes smooth, smooth on. I cannot afford to build this house if I can't Airbnb it. In fact, my construction loan approval is dependent on my ability to make money from the property when this finishes. So now I am out tens of thousands of dollars, and the property will drop in value in our dream of a beach house that we can visit on a regular basis and eventually retire and. Neither this council, the mayor, or any of the supporters of this policy have shown a shred of evidence that shows that this will provide any improvements for the housing in a rural community like this. Um, keep in mind, you are not capping, just capping STR businesses with this rule. You are also capping all of the businesses that support us. I pay our cleaning lady fifty dollars an hour. This cap will prevent her from continuing to grow her business and potentially put many out of business with no future prospects of growth in sight. You are capping the potential growth of many's fault businesses, handyman, yard work, and so on. You're also capping the potential uh revenue generated by the TRT tax. Uh, this rule will also lead to the decline of the quality of STRs available. No new competition. STR owners can chart whatever they want and won't care about how well they maintain their homes. People want to come to Rockaway. There are very few motels, so they won't have a choice but to stand a few STRs that exist. This is nothing to help with the locals' valid complaints against problem STRs. All that is needed to do that is to enforce, enforce the laws that are already on the books from last year. Uh, an ironic part of my thinking on this is I actually do think this will help with your your workforce housing. Uh, as Home Beach is an example, it did solve it. Not by increasing the amount of workforce housing, housing, but by decreasing the amount of workforce needed. Please do what's best for the community as a whole, not just few of the local, local full-time residents. This community needs STRs. Please vote no on ordinance twenty twenty four oh one, or at the very least, set a reasonable timeline for section one, paragraph G. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Michael, Michael Weisepfleger. Please approve the podium, state your name and address. Watch the magic orb.
Still need your name. Bring back the time. Uh, Michael Weisepfleger, seven thirty, South Halen. Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. And I'm gonna update some numbers that people have been talking about tonight. In just the last twelve months, based on city records, the number of STRs in Rockaway Beach has increased from four hundred and one to four hundred and seventy-eight. A nineteen percent increase in just one year. This number is not pending applications and new ones that are going to try to get any fourth proposed caps established. Even at the four seventy-eight level, STRs represent about twenty-three percent of all current available housing in Rockaway Beach. So right now, there is almost one STR for every three housing units, full and part-time. Too much is too much. I propose we're already past this point. Yes, we are a tourist destination, and our businesses thrive on those tourists. That is, Rockaway Beach has more hotel rooms than any other city in Toma County, as well as the four hundred and seventy-eight STRs, which is a higher percentage of available housing than any, than in any other city in or in incorporated areas in Toma County. And there's already significant excess tourist housing in Rockaway Beach. I doubt any STR owner can claim they have anything close to a hundred percent capacity. An Airbnb study from two thousand twenty-three indicates the average STR in Oregon has forty percent unused occupancy on an annual basis. I've provided that counsel at that link. More STRs does not automatically mean more revenue to the businesses, the city, or STR owners. More STRs would simply dilute the current STR owner's revenue. More tourists coming to Rockaway that can benefit businesses can fill existing STR housing inventory easily, increasing efficiency and creating uh more revenue for existing STR owners. And as a result, create more revenue for businesses, the city, and STRs without increasing the number of STRs. According to city records, only six to two, six point two percent of STRs are owned by Rockaway Beach residents. That means ninety-three point eight percent of STR owners don't even call Rockaway Beach home. And in fact, thirty percent don't even live in Oregon. I have to wonder if those ninety-three point eight percent of non-resident STR owners would be so pro-STRs if they were allowed in their neighborhoods in Fortland or elsewhere rather than ours in Rockaway Beach. Capping STRs so we are not further inundated with them will improve balance and livability for all residents. And as stated before, a cap will not adversely affect anyone's revenue. A win-win-win-win for businesses, current STR owners, non-STR residents, and the city. Therefore, I support the city council instituting a cap on short term rents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the the remote and.
Mayor, we have two, uh, new hands raised on Zoom. Uh, the first is Crystal with a K. K R I S G A L, last name is Cin, C I N. So it's Carol Walton.
Okay. Uh, uh, Crystal, if you'll state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is Crystal Sinkway. My address is four nine three Pacific View Drive. Um, I also own a short-term rental. Um, I'm also a real estate agent and have helped sell many homes in the Rockaway area and just in the Portland and metro area in general. And so I'm familiar with, you know, other cities having caps. I, I can see both sides of this, even being a short-term owner. Um, I, I don't see you guys honestly not passing this. So I, I guess I just have requests on adding things to this to help all of us kind of feel a little more heard and, and at peace with moving forward with this. And I apologize if anyone has said this already, but um, other areas, they have requirements on the short-term rental owners to actually use their licenses. Um, I'm familiar with many people already in this town that since this whole thing had started, the topic has started, as you guys have all mentioned, the amount of short-term rentals have gone up so much in that amount of time, and that is the reason. It's not just because all of a sudden Rockaway got super popular in the last year. It's because everyone's talking about this requirement and everyone's worried and and want to get a license so that they get grandfathered in. So I know many people that in the last year just got a license and they're not renting out their property. And I'm, I'm worried that if, you know, I believe it's Manzanita, they have a requirement that you have to use your property if you actually have a license because they have a cap. This is helping it so um, the locals aren't just getting a license to make sure that the cap is always full so that we can't have actual rentals in their own neighborhood. Um, I think it would, it would help, you know, possibly lower the amount of people actually having licenses. And so that people, when they do sell their home, there might be availability to have a, an open license for their home um, for the new people to get a license if they want to, because it won't always be full if there is this type of requirement. Um, and then kind of adding on to like the transferability. I know that there's major opinions on both sides. And if, and if you guys, you know, are going towards not accepting the, the transferability, I mean, at least maybe adding some sort of clause in there that anyone that currently has a license has a maybe one-time transferability. Um, so it's not maybe forever and always, but at least for all of us that are currently owning and have already had a license and already have their home as a rental, that we can at least have a one-time. If that's a possibility, if you guys are maybe going towards not doing it, thinking maybe that.
Crystal, can you, can you wrap it up?
Yes. Yes, um, and I think, yeah, I think, I think I kind of said all, all of the main things, just, you know.
Thank you.
I, I guess one more thing, maybe capping off, like how many people can actually have or how many short-term rentals people can actually have. So there's not, like they said, a California person coming in and buying ten, twenty houses and turning it into a short-term rental, like helping out the small people like me that, you know, can have one or two rentals and that the entire amount of the cap isn't um, eaten up by those type of people.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes Carol Bolton. Uh, please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council, and thank you uh, to the mayor for listening um, to my comments tonight. I'm Carol Bolton, the president of Rockaway Shores Condominiums located at three hundred North Pacific Street in Rockaway Beach, Oregon. Um, I was born and raised in Oregon since nineteen fifty-five. And luckily, through a family circumstance, I was able to purchase a condominium at Rockaway Shores Condominium in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and eleven, um, my husband and I decided to uh, allow this property to be listed as a short-term rental on VRBO and Airbnb. Each and every summer, uh, I, I receive requests for rental as there is not enough availability in Rockaway Beach. Uh, renters support our local business and everyone will tell you I love coming to Rockaway Beach because of the long, you know, longest beach in Oregon and just the community as a whole. Um, the caps that I feel we're looking at are going to decrease the income flow to the city that provides improvements to our parks and um, benefits for tourism. Even though I know a lot of local residents are not in support of that, I think it's really, really important um, for the city to support the businesses and that is supported through tourism. Um, there, um, I, I've been researching some online uh, programs that are coming forward and there's eighty-five new single-family lots being planned at Lake Lidle is my recent um, research. And there isn't, there could be an HOA formed in this community with rules in place for short-term rentals and, and programs that support the city's ordinances without um, reducing STRs. We have um, rules and regulations and bylaws in our community. We support the city's um, mandate and um, have very, very few problems in our condominium complex when it comes to um, the, the issues with, we don't, we don't allow parties in our building and we don't allow out of um, out of character people. We just, it's just not who we are. Um, rules are in place in our HOA which eliminate issues. And um, I think that the city could look at HOA models that would help them as well for new developments um, for the single-family homes. Rockaway Shores consists of twenty-four units and twenty-one of those units are short-term rental, which tells you that, you know, our unit owners depend on short-term rental for income. I always love this um, Governor Tom McCall's message to the state of Oregon.
Carol, you're three, you, you, uh, just sum it up in a sentence or two, please.
I can. Welcome to Oregon. Things look different here. Rockaway Shores, we should continue to be different. Rockaway Shores is still an affordable community and um, we can support affordable housing through HB four oh six five that's currently in the legislature that will give developers who are uh, uh, developing affordable housing and um, uh, of uh, uh, bases and a grant to uh, move that forward.
Carol, Carol, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
Any else on the, uh, I will close the public meeting at this time. All right, uh, the Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to hold a public hearing to receive public comment on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or city councillor position. At this time, I open the public here. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. Person speaking shall address their comments to the city council as a whole and keep their comments to three minutes. Uh, the electronic timer next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning uh, yellow. Uh, I do have the sign-up sheet and nobody signed up. Do we have anybody online? All right, uh, I will then close the public hearing at this time. And um, given that this meeting is a long meeting, we are going to take a ten-minute recess at this time and we will reconvene at ten minutes to eight.
The recording has stopped.
Nice.
This meeting is being recorded.
The Rockaway Beach City Council meeting, well, back to order. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody joining us remotely? All right, so the chair recognizes Jerry Stanfield. Please come to the podium. Say your name and address, and you have four minutes. The egg will turn yellow when you have one minute left.
The Lions Club is on Anchor Street, 386 Anchor. I'm here to renew our permit for the weenie-wagging at the wayside so we can continue doing the good work in the community and the high schools. And I've given all of my schedule. The vision of days we're going to be operating. About it.
And we'll be voting on it later this evening.
You're going to vote on it later this evening?
Yep.
Stick with us because we do good work for the community.
I love dropping by and buying a good hot dog. I'm a fan.
Very much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Rob, and I apologize, Rob, I can't.
Sin.
Sin. Please approach the podium. State your name and address, and you have four minutes. This will turn yellow when you have one minute left.
I am somewhat colorblind, so wave at me if I-
Okay, I will be happy to do that.
I'm Rob Sin. I live at 150 Ridge Lane on Alaska One. I was invited here by some of your community. I'm an environmental health and safety specialist. My specialty is primarily in the propane field. And I am here because I recently become aware that Rockaway Beach is beginning to enforce a rather new rule requiring the elevation of propane tanks if located in tsunami risk areas or flooding risk areas. And this is concerning to me. My understanding is that this new rule was initiated from some conversations with FEMA. There's a publication FEMA put out, I think in 2018, which does recommend elevating propane tanks in tsunami areas and flood areas as one possible method to mitigate risk in these areas. It does, however, list some other options for mitigating that risk. I have been told that someone from FEMA has communicated with some of the city leadership here that elevating propane tanks is the only acceptable method to mitigate that risk. That is not what the FEMA document says. I have recently reached out to FEMA asking for clarification on their position of this. I'm quite concerned of it because this practice of elevating propane tanks, while I recognize the well-meaning intent behind it, they are, you know, trying to react to a plausible risk. However, it unintentionally introduces several other risks I don't believe they've taken into account, which I believe are far more likely to result in death or serious injury than the very risks that they are endeavoring to mitigate by raising the tanks in the air. And so that's why I wanted to speak with you folks today. My friend and colleague is here, I believe is going to share a little bit more on this after me. But I did want to let you know that I have reached out to the highest level of specialists in the propane industry, and I have asked them, have they ever heard of a propane-related structure fire or explosion occurring as a result of a tsunami or a flood? And anyone I have talked to has never heard of a single occurrence of this happening. It's not saying that it's impossible, but if it ever has happened, it's an extremely unlikely event, whereas the type of risks which elevating a propane tank in the air introduces are far more likely to occur. And I would also like to just leave you by letting you know that I've also spoken to some folks in the propane industry who have assured me that they are already beginning to work on strategy to bring their concerns about raising propane tanks in the air up with FEMA in hopes and making some changes to their literature and also getting clarification. Is this something that they're not only recommending but requiring? I believe that it is a recommendation at this point. Thank you. I will be done. Thank you for your time. No, thank you very much.
Rob.
Yes. S E N.
S E N.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. The chair recognizes Chris Meyer.
Please state your name and address, and you have-
Chris Meyer, 9615 over 317, Rockaway Beach, Oregon. Thank you all for letting us speak. To kick off what Rob just got done speaking about, as of a couple of days ago, we are working with the city to communicate with FEMA about the dangers of elevating propane tanks compared to anchoring them. Anchoring them in any flood zone, any flood plan, tsunami plan is by far the safest method for extended practice for the propane community. Elevating a propane tank in the air is also the most dangerous thing you could possibly do with a propane tank. A couple of things that come to light instantly but were brought to my attention by firefighters was, and I quote, "You're going to take a giant exploding marshmallow and put it up in the air where we can't get it down and put it on the main source of the heat of the fire," or whether a neighboring house or the house that is on fire. And I said, "Well, that's their plans." And so that alone is one of the most dangerous things you can do, not only for first responders, but for neighboring houses or anything like that. As of right now, a propane tank sitting next to a house with house schedule on fire, you can disconnect it, you can roll it away from the house safely. If it's up on a platform, we can't get it down. So you can't shut it off quickly if it's in a fire. Obviously, you're not going to climb a platform in the middle of a fire to try to shut down a propane tank. And I have a long list. I obviously don't have that long to talk, and I'm not that fast of a speaker. But a second thing that comes to mind as you all are talking about vacation homes and things like that would be the children. You got a platform, what are they going to do? They're going to climb it. You got, unfortunately, some residents come and they drink a lot, and they might be slightly intoxicated. The first thing that I don't want to do is climb the platform, which is also a great place to light up fireworks. So just another couple of things. Also, obviously, we all live on the coast. You know how this works. Everything here rusts. I don't know about you, but I live up on the hill. I'm not even right on the water, and everything I own is turned into dust. So you put a platform that has to be made out of steel, you put a propane tank on top of it, how long is it until that thing is unstable? And then what's going to happen? Thing's going to fall. Lot less danger to have it on the ground anchored down. I read in Cannon Beach, their page that Cannon Beach has, the likelihood of a tsunami within the next 50 years is 10 to 14%. So the odds of a fire, the odds of any of these other things that are on our list are a lot higher, the slight chance of a tsunami. So if FEMA decides they want to continue to push us, we are obviously going to fight that, but we just wanted the city to know that elevating a propane tank is extremely dangerous and not safe. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I beat the timer.
All right, we'll move on to old business, consideration of proposed amendments to Ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 113, related to short-term rentals. The city manager has provided a staff report in the agenda packet discussing two amendments proposed by some members of the council for consideration. Proposed amendment to add subsection F. As written, this new subsection F would provide a new exception for those that are buying a house in Rockaway Beach during this update process. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes. I have the sign-up sheet. I do not have anybody signed up. Do we have anybody? Okay, all right. So the chair will entertain a motion that the Rockaway Beach City Council amend Ordinance 2024-01 by adding new subsection F, title of license availability exception as presented in the staff report.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, this is a big amendment, and I may need a little help with going through it. But do I need to read the whole amendment?
No, you can make a motion.
Oh, oh, oh.
You can just make a motion.
So let me just say briefly what motion I'm making though. But this is the one to extend the deadline to apply for an STR license instead of making it immediately effective in March, to extend it out six months or 180 days, right?
For people who are-
Who are in the process, or as I like to say, in the pipeline and are working on selling their house or are under construction and can soon apply for an STR license. That's what I call in the pipeline. So that, just so people know, because we do have two amendments, so I wanted to explain that. So I make a motion that the council adopt Amendment F to Ordinance 2024-01.
I'll second that amendment.
Second it, all right. It is moved and seconded to amend Ordinance 2024-01 by adding new subsection F, title license availability exception as presented in the staff report. Counselor McGinnis, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, this is a response to the many people who have contacted me and probably other city councilors too and asked for some breathing room with this. And we heard you, I heard you, and so we have this amendment.
Any other counsel comment?
I think it's going to be a good stopgap to, for all of us to sit back and reevaluate this and give us a chance to understand what we're actually doing here.
All right, with that, no further discussion. Let's record how counselors vote. Counselor President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes recused herself. Counselor Martine, excuse me, is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
It passes with three yeses.
I'd like to say for the record that I have a potential conflict of interest. Please.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to proposed amendment to subsection C. As written, this amendment, subsection E, would allow short-term rental licenses to transfer at change of ownership so long as the city is notified within 30 days. Again, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I do not have anybody signed up. We have anybody remotely? We do not. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council amend Ordinance 2024-01, subsection C, as presented in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council amend Ordinance 2024-01, subsection C, as presented in the staff report. Want to make any comments, Counselor Cheek?
I frankly passed it over.
I would like to make comments. Why, thank you. So a little bit similar to what Mary just said, we've had a lot of input and feedback, especially around this particular aspect of some of the changes. And it seemed the number of responses we got on this specifically that this was really important for us to hear.
Would you remind everyone who might be listening exactly what the amendment is?
So in the current ordinance for short-term rentals passed in August of 2022, it did not allow for transferability of STR license. So if I owned a house that I had a license to operate an STR and I sold it to Counselor McGinnis, she would have to go and start at the beginning and apply for a license. And that was fine, didn't really have an impact in the marketplace. With a cap, it does affect the market because if I sell my house that is currently being operated as an STR to Mary McGinnis, if we already have reached the cap, she will not be in a position to go and get a license to run the house she purchased from me as an STR. Is that okay?
So I also have a comment too, and I heard some people speak about this earlier today. There is a little danger with this, that it creates a block where the same houses forever are transferring licenses and no new houses can ever come on the market or in the STR market. So I'm just saying that if this passes, one of the things we're going to look at is, next month, we'll probably talk about this part, but once a year, reevaluating what needs to be changed with this ordinance. And I'm thinking this might be one of the first things that gets looked at, like, is it stopping, putting a plug in the market and not allowing new homes in it? But for the first, but for the people right now, it's a good thing, I think.
Yeah, and I'll just remind the counselors what Jason Maxfield spoke to. What this could end up creating is a two-tier market, the haves and the have-nots. You think about two properties that are equivalent, same price, similar properties. One has an STR license and one doesn't have an STR license with transferability. Which property will have an advantage in the marketplace? Jason made the point that the one with an STR license will have an advantage. So I certainly understand, I've talked to, I've heard from STR business license holders, that transferability is an important thing, but I want the council to understand that there are 1,500 other homeowners in Rockaway Beach that will be set aside and become disadvantaged in the marketplace, so.
Thank you for that. And that's why I think, like I said, passing this now will help immediately with the people who are wanting to sell, but it may be one of the first things that gets looked at when we reevaluate the situation of your-
Is there any further discussion? All right, let's record how counselors vote. Counselor President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes has recused herself. Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
It passes three yeses. Motion passed. The second reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-01 as amended, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 113, related to short-term rentals. This is consideration to perform the second reading of Ordinance 2024-01. This ordinance amends the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 113, related to short-term rentals. It establishes the authority, sets a cap on licenses, and authorizes the establishment of fees for waiting lists. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to consider performing the second reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 113, related to short-term rentals. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the city charter. The chair will now entertain a motion to perform the second reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-01.
I move that Rockaway Beach City Council approve the reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-01.
Second.
Did I jump too far?
Yes.
Oh, I motion, I move, okay, well, the language in that is, it says, "I move to perform."
Yeah.
Okay, the second reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-01.
Second.
I second it.
Second it. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council perform the second reading by title only of the Ordinance 2024-01. Would you like to make any comments?
No, this, just so everybody understands, I, this is just- No, this, just so everybody understands, I, this is just so we can do the second reading.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're doing. All right, since there's no comments, let's record our councillors' vote. President, Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselors recused herself. Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with three yeses. I'll now perform the second reading. Ordinance 2024-01 as amended, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances Chapter 113 related to short term rentals. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-01 as amended.
I move that Rockaway Beach City Council approve the second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-01.
Second.
I second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve the second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-01 as amended. Comments?
Again, this was just the second reading.
All right. We'll now record how councillors vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes recused herself. Counsel Martine is absent. And Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with three yeses. Into consideration to adopt as amended ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances Chapter 113 related to short term rentals. With the first and second reading now complete, ordinance 2024-01 as amended is ready for adoption. The Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve as amended or deny ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances Chapter 113 related to short term rentals.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve as amended ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance amending City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances Chapter 113 related to short term rentals. Are there any comments from council?
Yes, I appreciated all of the comments tonight. I have like three, four pages of notes here from people and all of the many, many phone calls I received about this and the letters and our emails and just everything, because everything took me personally down another journey to learn more about this and, and which resulted in the amendment that I proposed tonight. And, and there's a couple of things I wanted to mention real quickly. So people have asked repeatedly why we're doing this. Well, it's actually in our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan in response, is goal number 10, in response to the state saying we need to look at this, we said, the city shall review the impacts of vacation rentals on the demand for public facilities and services, neighborhood identity and community, and the city's tax structure. It's on page 37 in our comprehensive plan. And we hadn't been looked at for 17 years. So I appreciate that we have a governing body now whose willing to pick up the things that have been sort of passed over for quite some time and catch us up on all of the legal things that our comprehensive plan and state law says we need to be doing. So that's one of the things that brought this up and, and that's not been part of the conversation very much. So I wanted to say that. I also want to assure people that this ordinance would have no impact at all on current STR owners. So I've heard from a lot of people who said, I own an STR, I'm counting on it for retirement. How will this keep me from retiring? And it won't. If you want to keep this STR for the next 50 years, assuming Rockaway is still a city then, that's yours and you can keep doing it. And it will not reduce, in fact, it will increase, the way we're, the ordinance is written, it will actually increase the number of STRs from what we have now. So there will be even more TRT tax coming in than there is now. So it won't impact the people now, it won't, not the people, the, the STR owners, and it won't impact negatively our TRT tax, which I, as a city councillor, really like at budget time, I can tell you that. So that's one fear I wanted to, to kind of put to rest so that people would know they don't have to go home, know if this passes and think, oh my gosh, they're going to take my STR away from me. That wouldn't happen. If it passes, we now have this window where more people can come in than previously where it was written. And we're not putting a cap on it tonight. If it passes, that would be done at a later date. And we've put another stopgap in, and that is once a year that this gets looked at, that there's data during that year collected and, and then it gets looked at again and people, and we can say, you know, this is working, this isn't working. And, and that's why it's, the cap is being passed separately. But I also feel it's very important that the city have the right in ordinance to make decisions. And we are the only city on the Oregon coast right now that doesn't have an ordinance that says the city has a right to make this decision. Whether we make it tonight or whether, whether we put a cap on it next month or whether we would put a cap on it five years from now, this is giving us the right to do that at some point. And, and like I said, right now, we're the only city, if you look at the counties and the cities, we're the only ones that, well, maybe Tillamook. That's, I'm not sure about Tillamook because they're not generally have a lot of STRs there. But anyway, so that's, that's it. I just feel like this is something that is giving us the same right that other cities have.
Counsel Frankin, did you have anything you want? Sure.
No, I think Mary covered it pretty excellently.
I'll just mention a couple of things. First of all, the council's not considering this ordinance because we think it's going to magically fix housing. It has nothing to do with affordable housing, workforce housing, income based housing. There's other heavy, tough work that the council's going to have to do with the city to figure that out in the future. And it's, it's, it's high on my list of priorities for, for next year. My biggest concern is, and secondly, let me say, we hear a lot about TRT and the money flowing into the coffers of the city. Please understand that we are constrained with how we can use that money. It's not just dumping into our general fund. The, the general rule at the state level is 70% goes to tourism and 30% goes to other, and then our ordinance parcels that out in, in various ways. So this isn't, this isn't a free ride for the city that's fueling our, our general fund. My interest in, in having the council have this capability is our infrastructure. Water production has gone up 17%. That's not been driven by growth in residents, that's been driven by growth in tourists. Tourists won't have to pay to, to expand our, our water plant. The residents will have to pay to do that. We've had an increase of 18% in incident calls for the sheriff's office. That's not because our residents are getting more rowdy, that's because we've got more tourists coming into town. So we do have tourist growth happening. TRT will not fund that. So for me as mayor, I do have to think about visitors, I have to think about, and I do, I have to think about business owners and including short term business owners, I do. I have to think about residents and part time residents, and I have to think about city staff. You know, there's a lot of stakeholders in this and my biggest concern comes down to infrastructure. We have a five year roads improvement plan, TRT is not going to pay for that, residents are going to pay for that. So that's my few cents. All right, since there's no further discussion, let's record how councillors vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes recused herself. Counselor Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The, the motion passes with three yeses. All right, let's move on to new business. First and second reading by title ordinance of ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or city councillor position. The Charter of the City of Rockaway Beach, Chapter 7, Section 27, provides that the council must adopt an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. Ordinance 2024-02 amends the City of Rockaway Beach Code of Ordinances to add a new, Chapter 36, titled Elections. This proposed ordinance will codify the city's current process of billing by petition, which is the process of billing by obtaining voter's signatures. This is consideration to perform the first and second reading of ordinance 2024-02. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to consider performing the first and second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the city charter. The Chair will now entertain a motion to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance 2024.
I move to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-02.
I'd like to make a comment.
Well, we're going to go through this.
Okay.
And then you'll have a chance to, to comment. Absolutely. Second.
I second.
Second it. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-02. Counsel Frankin, would you like to make any comments? Counsel Chief, other councillors want to make a comment?
I'd like to include both options in our elections. I'd like that stated in the record, please. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Since there's no further discussion, let's record our councillors' vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. First reading, ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. Second reading, ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance 2024-02.
I make a motion to approve by reading the title only, ordinance 2024-02.
Second.
I second the motion.
Any comments? Counsel McGinnis.
Well, you know, it's, it's been done for 15 years in the city and it's worked successfully for 15 years. And it was scary for me when I ran in 2022. I was like, do I know 11 people who can sign my petition? And that took like half a day, so I realized it's not really that scary. And we have two months to do it.
Any comments?
No.
Councillors, any other comments? All right, then let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counsel Hayes. Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. Consideration to adopt ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. With the first and second readings now complete, ordinance 2024-02 is ready for adoption. The Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position.
I move that Rockaway Beach City Council adopt ordinance 2024-02.
Second.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor or a city councillor position. Any councillor comment? All right, with that, we'll, we'll take the vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. All right, on to some resolutions. Consideration of Resolution 2024-10, approving wayside use permit applications. This resolution, resolution approves four wayside use permit applications from the Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce and one application from the Rockaway Beach Lions Club. Details can be found in their submitted applications. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Did not have anybody sign up for this?
No.
I'm not going to recognize anybody, sorry. All right, the Chair.
There's just nobody left.
She said she didn't.
No, no answer.
No answer. So I couldn't hear what she said.
We have secret. The Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution 2024-110, approving wayside use permit applications.
I move that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2024-10.
Second.
I second it.
Second. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2024-110, 10, approving wayside use permit applications. Any council comment?
I just have a question. Christine, what are you gonna, what are you gonna sell over there in your space, do you know?
I did not do this paperwork, no, but I'm sure they'll think of something. Not fireworks.
Oh, not fireworks, but I was just curious what it was that, I mean, one year you, one year you've cooked food for the kids at the high school, you've done a lot of different things. So I just thought maybe you could toss out there an idea of what you were thinking.
They have a plan. I do know that we plan on doing a live auction and having live music like last year.
Hmm.
Good, thank you for that.
And, and speaking of that, this is something that I feel is important, to do this for the chamber, to give them this space again, because they will need to offset some of the revenue on fireworks. I think this is very important that this is included.
Yeah, it's the same space they've been getting for, for I don't know how many years. Counsel Hayes.
I will.
A lot of years, yeah, good. All right, well, let's, let's record how councillors vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes. Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. Consideration of Resolution 2024-12, approving awards for the 2023-2024 SOD improvements Grant Program. This resolution approves awards for applicants for the 2023-2024 SOD Improvement Grant Program. This grant is funded, lodging tax collected by the city and is administered by the Citizens Association. Funds are available up to $200,000 for this grant, the maximum request 20,000. The council reviewed applications in the workshop and may now consider granting awards. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I had nobody sign up, okay? And the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach Council approve or deny consideration of Resolution 2024-12, approving awards for 2023-2024 SOD improvements Grant Program.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-12. Well, sorry, I lost place here because I was trying to look up the grants. And I just make a motion we approve Resolution 2024.
I'll second.
We, we have a second. It was moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve consideration of Resolution 2024-12, approving awards for the 2023-2024 SOD Improvements Grant Program. Any comments from council?
No.
I have to recuse myself as a conflict of interest because I have a grant application in the.
Thank you.
And, and the reason I was trying to look up the grants is, is just to mention that we're going, they, they will be doing some pretty interesting business, things for our downtown. And there's a lot of them, so I'm not going to read all of them, but I see two people here, three people here, who will, whose businesses will benefit from this. And I urge everyone to go on the website because these grant applications are on the website and, and just see the good things that you can expect in the next several months from our downtown as a result of these grants.
Thank you. Since there is no further discussion, let's record how councillors vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Frankin.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes recused herself. Counsel Martine is absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with three yeses.
I would like to comment for the record that I, I piloted the workshop that we continue to keep the grant program open until we have spent the money that. to keep the grant program open until we have spent the money that has been allocated to that pot, especially to those who have applied and need to give information or to nonprofits like the Lions because they apply, so. Thank you.
Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen authorizing the city of Rockaway Beach to apply apply for land and water conservation fund assistance from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for development accessible restroom facilities at Lake Lidle and authorizing the city manager to sign the application. The resolution, we'll get there quickly, give me a moment. The resolution authorizes staff to apply to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for a federal land and water conservation fund grant for accessible restroom facilities at Lake Lidle. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Nobody signed up. Nobody, so the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen authorizing the city of Rockaway Beach to apply for land and water conservation fund assistance from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for development accessible restroom facilities at Lake Lidle and and authorizing the city city manager to sign the application.
I've seen the toss Resolution two zero two four dash one three authorizing city of Rockaway Beach to apply for land and water conservation fund assistance from the Oregon Parks and Recs Department for development accessible restroom facilities at Lake Lidle and authorizing the city planner to sign the application.
City manager.
The city planner.
I'll second it.
All right. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach Council approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen authorizing the city of Rockaway Beach to apply for land and water conservation fund assistance from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for development accessible restroom facilities at Lake Lidle and authorizing the city manager to sign the application. Any comment from council?
Yay.
Okay, since there's no further discussion, let's record our counselors' vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes. Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
It passes with four yeses. Counselor, consideration consideration of Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen authorizing letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency, also known as STEA, application for RACE grant. This resolution authorizes the letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernment Agency's application with final submission by Tullma County for a rebuilding a rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant, also known as RACE, to develop the Salmonberry Trail section to the city of Rockaway Beach. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I have no signups. We have nobody on Zoom, so we will move to the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty twenty four dash fourteen authorizing letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency's application for RACE grant.
I make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four fourteen authorizing a letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency STEA application for RACE grant.
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty four twenty four dash fourteen authorizing letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency's application for a RACE grant. Anybody on council want to opine?
Just briefly, that this is considered something that really helps our case in in receiving the grant, this letter, that the city is on board with the whole project. So it's important.
And I'd like to restate my appreciation for how the city manager and probably city coordinator and city planner have just gone after trying to find funding for this program and they just don't give up and they keep finding something else.
Let's record our counselors' vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen approving awards for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four offseason tourism marketing grant program specifically for a grant application from Rockaway Community Education. This resolution authorized awards for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year offseason marketing and promotion grants. This grant is funded with lodging tax collected by the city and is administered by the Tullma Coast Visitors Association. The council reviewed an application in the workshop and may now consider granting an award. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I've got nobody and we have nobody virtually. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen approving an award to Rockaway Community Education for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four offseason tourism marketing grant program.
I'm so moved.
Second.
I second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen approving awards for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four offseason tourism marketing grant program. Council have any comments?
No, it's I think it's anything we can do to get people in the off season here is fabulous. I mean, January's been slow and we we need more marketing.
All right, let's record how anybody else. I didn't want to short anybody's opportunity to opine. I think we're good for a vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen approving the proposal from SSW Consulting for strategic planning services and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement. This resolution approves a proposal from SSW Consulting to assist the city in its efforts to develop a five-year strategic plan and authorizes the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the project. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I have nobody signed up and I got the the head shake, so the chair will entertain a mo.
And raise.
Okay. All right. The chair recognizes Cynthia Farin. Please state your full name and address and you'll have four minutes to speak. Is that a false?
Sorry, sorry, took me a moment to get the unmute signal. Thank you. I just wanted I I do contracts for a living, so I listened to the presentation earlier in the workshop and the one thing that stood out to me is part of the proposal appears to be have a longer tail to it. So I certainly hope in the city manager's review of the contract if this is approved, that options out of any long tail are in the contract without financial pain for the city.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, the chair will check for hands, no hands. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen approving the proposal from SSW Consulting for strategic planning services and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement.
I I make a motion that the city council approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen approving the proposal from SSW Consulting for strategic planning services and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement.
Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen approving the proposal from SSW Consulting for strategic planning services and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement. Care to comment?
It'll be the first strategic plan in modern times anyway for the city of Rockaway, and it's a foundation for building other plans that we might have, like a transportation plan later or things like that. And and it involves extensive community input, like that part of it, and and also the fact that this company, SSW Consulting, has a great track record of working with other cities around Oregon.
Any other comments? I'll just echo what Counselor McGinnis said is that this is a really exciting time for our city. It's a great time to be mayor of Rockaway Beach, and I'm very excited. We're at the point where we can entertain putting together a strategic plan, thinking out five years. It will help the council in executing its responsibilities. It will help city staff in executing their responsibilities. So the price tag, I was pleasantly surprised, is not huge, and we will accrue huge value from this exercise. And I like Counselor McGinnis and I suspect all of the counselors, we're very happy to see how important and how much part of this will be community engagement and community involvement, which is near and dear to all of our hearts. So with that, any further discussion? All right, let's record our counselors' vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes. Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. All right, we're now going to consideration, consider the regular city council meeting minutes from Wednesday, January tenth, twenty twenty four, and I believe Counselor Hayes wanted to add something to it.
At the top of page four, where I spoke as a citizen, I declared my potential conflict of interest in the beginning of that. And I just wanted to ensure that.
Yeah, subject hearing.
And it might be that I was my voice was low or whatever because I I guess I'm hard to hear, which is weird because I feel like I'm yelling. It's the second paragraph down.
Where it starts, Christine Hayes testified that her comments were made as okay, and so we should add Christine Hayes recused.
For a point on page eight.
Page. Yeah. Oh.
Right there, right.
I think I did it both times. Sorry, but I I want to. I've said it many times over the last week.
Would you like us to add that line? Okay, Christine Hayes.
What did we add it?
Just that she recused herself.
Yeah, you'll want to do the through motion.
Oh, okay. Will you make a motion to add that?
I motion we add the sentence.
And and read and say the sentence slowly.
I declare a potential conflict of interest and my comments are amended as a private citizen. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read it back just to make sure I got it for you. Christina Hayes declared a potential conflict of interest and her comments were made as a private citizen. Okay. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach Council approve the amended regular city council meeting minutes from Wednesday, January tenth. Any additional comment? Okay, we'll check and take a vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Martine is absent. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses. Well, let's move on to council comments. I'm exhausted. Counsel President Cheek.
Well, I want to give a shout out to our fire department and the paramedics and the gentleman that came out and helped me Friday morning. They were very professional. I felt very comfortable. The first two young men that came didn't know who I was, and they treated me like I was an angel. And nobody knew who I was until Mr. Grace came. And then I guess it became known that I was on the city council, but they were absolutely marvelous, and you've done a great job training them. I can't tell you how I appreciate what you've done. It's outstanding, chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Franken.
Well, I would, as usual, like to thank the city staff and our city manager, our emergency services. Thank you. Heard a lot of sirens this week, a lot of sirens, so I know you guys have been very busy. And our awesome public works department. They're mostly all gone. Thanks for staying, but all the citizens' input was greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes.
I have a list. I'll be quick.
Hey, you take you take all the time you want.
Does it matter anymore?
Yeah.
No.
Thirty seconds.
I, when we passed the ADU zoning, we were the first ones to do it. And at that time, we discussed looking at those fees and the council at that time recognized that the ADU fees would be set by council, and we have not had that discussion. And we people are very upset about housing, and that's a way for us to create immediate housing. So I'd like us to look at that at those fees as a body and discuss how to create incentives. And I think if we did it like we passed the zoning first, I think the rest of the county might follow. And and that's my hope. Second, I would really like to talk about Park and Rec. I get that from a lot of county of community members. I don't know about you, but I would really like to talk about bringing Park and Rec back and do something with the school district like we did before. So there's that, there's that. We have a community. This last year, the chamber had a hundred and eighty six people come from Valley Catholic School, and we had a community cleanup day. And before COVID, as a city, we had a community cleanup day where Park and Public Works was involved, all the community would get involved. We had our local school involved, and they would send out parties of kids. I'd like us to bring that back. They're actually talking about bringing their middle school and their high school, so we're talking like five hundred people. And so I would love for us to talk about doing that as a body. We had, well, you know, the Tullma High School came and picked up the apple, and and so all working together, we could really make town look nice and also help some of the neighbors that can't get rid of fridges and Christmas trees. And so I'd really like to do that. The chamber had a workshop, and Chief Cassie came and spoke about a bunch of stuff that was very helpful. One of them had about twenty five people on average. Tullma PUD came and talked about generators and relays and surgeons, I believe if I have it right, errors from the sheriff's department came and spoke, and they had a bunch of really good information. I learned a bunch of stuff and I and and so I thought I was going to know what they were going to say, and so that was wonderful. And what else? Oh, our chamber got certified by the Oregon Main Street Program as a community connections partner. And so and we actually have all everything we need to do the next tier in that program, but we would we need a resolution from the council, much like the Salmonberry Trail Project. And we started that work. It was actually Terry Walton's idea, asked our council to do it years ago. And so it was raised again. He put that in. And and so hopefully we could do that. And what else can I say? I guess I'm really glad to know it's moving this. I guess I'm really glad to know it's moving this. I'm really glad I didn't have to vote.
Counsel McGinnis.
Yeah, I sort of went, what? Which is 500 students because I taught high school for 45 years and taking 500 students, and it was a baby jump, but, but it would be amazing to have some great cleanup in the town. It would be nice. I want to mention that Sean Vincent retired, and Chief Hesse and, and Kale Hesse planned an amazing retirement event at Twin Rocks, and it was well attended, the room was full, and it, and it was just sort of like this microcosm of what Rockaway is. It had all different people from all different occupations, some of our second homeowners were there, businesses were there, and everybody was paying tribute to someone who had worked for, for the city for 30 some years. It was a nice event. So thank you, Chief Hesse, and tell Kale, please, that, that it was much noticed by city council. I also want to thank the mayor and the council for taking on hard issues. I tried to think, and I typed all this up, and I tried to think how to word this, but this council body is picking up a lot of things that were kind of left by the wayside over the last couple of decades. And I mentioned our comprehensive plan that says we have to look at STRs, and they have not been looked at for 17 years. And, and it would be easy to kick it down the road and say, well, let's wait another 17 years, but I really appreciate that this council is, is taking on the hard issues, and the mayor. I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the people who reached out to me about STRs. I have a couple people I still haven't responded to. I was out of town in a, at a workshop yesterday, and I opened up my computer today, and I didn't have time to respond, but they're still telling us how STRs will affect them, and I really appreciate that, because two amendments came out of all the comments, and probably something else will happen from, from those comments on both sides. So thank you for reaching out. Please continue to do that about every issue. And I want to finish with mentioning about our drinking water. So I went Saturday, February the 3rd, and Christine and Mayor Charles were there, and afterward, to North Coast Communities for Watershed Protection Training, an event about what makes a healthy watershed, how to buy a healthy watershed, how to buy a watershed. And afterwards, someone posted on Facebook, why weren't any city council members there? And that kind of blew up on several Facebook pages. And I, so I just want to say that we were there, and in fact, the city actually paid for that event. We gave them one of our community grants to do three, three events. So I see a newspaper reporter here, so get that, get that in there, please, that the city is funding this. We're very much behind protecting our drinking watershed is the main point to understand, and we're funding training. Maybe within the next month or so, we'll be convening a citizens' committee to work on bringing input back. We have our city manager and Sandy Johnson wrote a $50,000 grant from DEQ to study the condition of our watershed, and I can just go on and on, but I just really want to stress that if you have any questions about, if the city is concerned about the watershed, please know that for months now, we have been just really diving into this, and it has our support. So another thing that came up is, so after, after the meeting, I went to dinner with the three, I went to one of our, the Sand Dollar, and went to dinner with our three guest speakers and a couple of other people, and the question kept coming up, so does Rockaway really treat its water? Does Rockaway really have clean water? And I want to say yes. All of our water treatment reports, or all of our water dams, may have to help me with what this is called, but our water reports are posted publicly on the website. They're very transparent. They're also on DEQ's website. And, and our water is like every other city's water, and better than most. I just want to say that, because if you ever, if you have a chance to tour the plant, or if you, I don't know, is that allowed, Ben? No. I've had the chance to tour like four times, and I forget, that's maybe because I'm a city councillor, but you will see the effort that goes into making sure we have quality clean, clean drinking water for everyone. Obviously, the fact that we're trying to buy and protect our watershed tells you that there are some issues we still need to take care of. Please note, we are taking care of those issues, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. City Recorder Thompson, can you throw up my slide, please? Oh, there, thank you. Perfect. All right. City Manager Shepherd and I held our monthly coffee with manager and mayor on Thursday, January 25th, and we included a summary of the comments shared in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. I think it was the most attended one we've had so far. We, we had the entire conference room table surrounded with people sitting and sharing with us. The next coffee with manager and mayor is Thursday, February 22nd. We really do hope you'll attend. It's an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts on Rockaway Beach with City Manager Shepherd and me. Both, both City Manager and I look forward to them and really value what we hear from our residents. And then I want to thank everyone who shared their thoughts on setting a cap on short-term rentals within the city limits of Rockaway Beach, that we are better as a community when we openly share our views while respecting the views of those who we disagree with. You know, I will tell you, though, the last month has been a lesson in the good, the bad, and the ugly of being an elected official and social media. League of Oregon Cities recommends that elected officials not discuss city business on social media, so I do not engage on community social media sites. Doesn't mean I don't look at them, because I find out about spaghetti feeds and fun things, and, and people post, and I'm a dog person and a cat person, and people post cute things about dogs and cats, and I love all that. But I must say, in terms of this issue with short-term rentals, it was a mixed bag of truth and fabrication. And then an example I just want to share of one of the fabrications that probably cut most with a quick for me was the suggestion on social media that city and council does not support local businesses. Council tonight granted facade grants that are going to improve customer experience and accessibility in our, our community and our commercial district. We granted a marketing grant that's going to help that organization support businesses with brochures and, and videos. And there, in our current budget, there's $2.4 million in tourism projects. So your city, our city, your council, our council supports local businesses. Finally, I just want to say, if you are interested in discussion, discussing anything with me regarding the city, whether it's short-term rentals, or elections, or any other topic, you know, please email me, and you can get my email address off of the city website. I, I have conversations and meet with residents regularly and, and make myself available. I also have a mayor's Facebook page where I post mayor talks and updates, so that's also available. But, you know, my family and friends would tell you that I love a good discussion, I love to debate, and I love to listen, because that's how I grow as your mayor. So thanks for your time and attention today. It's been a long meeting. We're knocking on nine o'clock, but please know, I am still listening. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Let's record votes. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Council President Franken.
Yes.
Counselor Hayes. Counsel Martinez absent. Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
We are adjourned at, we'll say 9:00 PM on Wednesday, February 14th, 2024.
He thinks the room is still full.